This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Put the meeting to order. First on the agenda is approval of minutes from three meetings, June 28th, August 16th, and September 13th. All three of us were here. All three of us received them from Tom. Any questions? If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
Second.
The motion to approve the minutes of June 28th, August 16th, and September 13th. All in favor?
Aye.
Extension. Mayor, do you have anything other than what's on the agenda?
No, I do not.
Sorry. Public speak. You're all here for various reasons, right? Okay. Um, the first thing up, I'm going to jump to the tax classification. Now, we don't have the values. Traditionally, values are brought in to support the reason why we don't split the tax rate between commercial property and residential property. Now, our principal assessor, Martha Lemme, has, I can't say her name.
Lemme.
Um, has, has a presentation which she'd like to go over. And she promises to send this PowerPoint to all the councilors and maybe post it if we can. Martha, the floor is yours.
Okay, like you said, Martha Lemme, principal assessor for the city of East Hampton. And I am here on behalf of the Board of Assessors to present to the board so they can make decisions on a few options. So before the tax rate can be set, the city council must hold a public hearing. Um, this is Finance Committee, so next week will be the public hearing to consider the tax rate options the city, um, must decide. Um, typically it's held only after the Board of Assessors has determined final values and classified all properties and reported the information to the Department of Revenue. The Department of Revenue will certify our values and that will set the parameters for the options the municipality may adopt. This hearing does not determine what the actual tax rate will be. It's purely illustrative. So we will determine, well, the city council will determine a single or split tax rate, an open space discount, a residential exemption, or, and/or, a small commercial exemption. I did just put, um, which I think it's good to know, how the tax rate is determined. There's two roles, city council's role and assessor's role. Appropriations are voted by city council. You have the total amount to be raised minus estimated receipts. That determines the amount to be raised by taxation. And the total amount to be raised by taxation is then divided by the total valuation of all personal property. And you come up with your tax rate. The assessor's role is develop the values based on sales within the town. And then they're reviewed by the Department of Revenue, as I mentioned earlier. So we go to the allocation of the tax levy. And it's the city council's job to decide whether to tax all classes at their full and fair cash valuation of the tax levy, which results in a single tax rate, or to reduce the share of the tax levy paid by the residential property owners and shift those to the commercial, industrial, and personal property taxpayers, which results in a split tax rate. There are some examples of doing that. It is not beneficial to the town of East Hampton, city of East Hampton, sorry, because we have such a small percentage of industrial and commercial. The majority of our revenue comes from our residential. Um, any tax rate mentioned here is just to, um, show where it would be. This is not our final tax rate. Um, please know that. This is not our final tax rate. It's just to illustrate what the split would be. And, um, I, this will be on our website. Um, it's just the historical tax rates starting in 2017 and a hypothetical for this current fiscal year. Would anybody like me to go over those?
I don't.
No. Okay. And also for information, just our tax rates for FY '23 for neighboring communities. So the open space discount really doesn't affect us. We have no properties with an open space classification, which is Class 2. And just for reference, residential classes are Class 1. Um, out of 351 municipalities, there are only 16 that classified property as open space and only one has an open space discount. The residential exemption, uh, city council may grant that it's a fixed dollar amount for each owner-occupied residence. It may not exceed 35% of the average assessed valuation. It does not change the total taxable value for residential properties. It just shifts it to, um, lower valued. I was confusing the commercial exemption, sorry. Lost my, lost my place. Um, it doesn't change the total taxable value for residential properties. It just shifts it from lower valued owner-occupied homes to higher valued and non-owner-occupied homes. And out of the 351 cities and towns, there are, um, they're mainly in, um,
Eastern.
Eastern Mass, the Cape, places with a lot of vacation properties, a lot of rentals. Um, we would not benefit for having a residential exemption because the majority of our properties are all owner-occupied. And lastly, is a small commercial exemption that the city council may grant. No more than 10% of the assessed value of each eligible commercial property, but only if the business has an annual average employment of no more than 10 people, certified by the Department of Employment and Training. And the valuation of the property must be less than 1 million. So if this is adopted, it shifts it from small businesses to larger businesses and it does not benefit the business itself, only the property owner. So 14 communities have adopted it. So it really doesn't benefit us because I don't think it's good for business to shift it to.
Just so you know, historically, in all of my years, and there's many of those years, we have never had splits actually in businesses and residential for the, for the reason of not having that much commercial industrial property to make it something we should do.
Um, agree.
Even though we don't have the values, I believe we can set the tax classification motion because Martha, you see no reason, this is what Barbara wrote, "to set a factor of 1 for fiscal year 2024 tax rate, keeping a single tax rate for all classes of property, and to not grant an open space discount or a residential exemption nor a small commercial exemption as recommended by the Board of Assessors and Finance Committee." I can take Board of Assessors out if they're not going to make a recommendation.
We will have a recommendation for the next meeting.
And that would be this Wednesday?
That would be the Monday before the next, next Monday.
Okay, good. Um, so that's the, uh, motion. So, and I, I bring that forward because we only set the tax classification. Tax rate and everything is done by the Board of Assessors. Does anybody have any questions of Martha or anything? So I'll take a motion, uh, for the Finance Committee to approve setting a factor of 1 for the fiscal year 2024 tax rate, keeping a single tax rate for all classes of property, and to not grant an open space discount nor a residential exemption nor a small commercial exemption as recommended, as to be recommended by the Board of Assessors. Second? No.
Uh, that's similar.
Okay.
Second.
The motion to set the tax rate of 1. That's stated. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Martha.
Thank you.
So next Wednesday, uh, there are three things about this tax classification plus the two CPA appropriations.
Okay, yes.
Thank you for doing this. And again, if you can send it to, get it posted on the website somehow and send it to all the councilors, the PowerPoint.
I will do that.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want a PowerPoint next week too? Or just leave it? Oh, no.
Mr. President, I don't think we need that. If, if you give it to all the councilors, they'll have it.
Should I print them or?
No, just send a, the actual thing by email.
Just want to be sure everybody has what they have. I don't want to miss anything.
Next thing up, um, Chair of the CPA Committee. I can give you all the information you need on these. And Jamie's here. Jamie, why don't you step forward? I'd like you to go over the new city, CPA committee unanimously and excitingly approved, uh, the new city park appropriation. And Jamie, if you want to explain it, that's fine.
Is that this?
No. This is the, I've got this.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
It's just the appropriation of $120,000 for the development and rehabilitation of existing Parsons Street playground from New City.
Um, okay, so thank you for considering this. Um, the request to the CPA Committee and city councils for the approval of $120,000 to support design development for two parks in the new city neighborhood. Existing Parsons Street Playground, which consists of, um, a swing set and a volley bike station. And the vacant, uh, Lincoln Street Parcel, which is the back half of the, um, old Parsons Street School. It was carved off, I think in 2015 when, uh, the city surplus the Parsons Street School. Uh, city retained the, uh, back parcel for a future parkland. Um, so currently that, that parcel's vacant. This $120,000 in CPA would be matched by $100,000 from the state through a budget earmark to, like I said, uh, support the design development for both of those projects, for both of those parcels. Um, the end goal of the funding would be to, um, create bid-ready construction documents, plans, and specs, um, and cost estimates for the, um, implementation of those park improvements. There would be, as part of the process, we would be hiring a designer or design team to, um, take the concept plans that were developed as part of the New City Master Planning Project, um, develop those, to those bid-ready documents. Um, there'll be at least two neighborhood meetings on the process um, between now and when those documents are finalized. At those neighborhood meetings, we would, uh, expect the, uh, designer and the planning department to facilitate, um, community into helping to, um, program the spaces in ways that are mutually beneficial and not redundant. So that way, the Parsons Street Playground has a set of uses that aren't just like duplicated in the, um, the Lincoln Street Parcel. The need for this, it's quite a, um, the, the New City area has a lack of, um, accessible open space, um, especially quality open space. Um, so this would fill, um, a big need for the neighborhood to, um, provide recreational resources for, um, a very dense part of our city with a lot of rental, uh, a lot of renters and, and multifamily apartments, things like that.
Anybody have any questions from Jamie? I'll just repeat that we voted eight to zero to fund this. Uh, we didn't debate it long. New City deserves playgrounds. And CPA will support it, I'm sure, in the future when it comes back for construction.
There will be additional asks for.
That surprises me.
Yeah, right? Well, we'd like to actually build this. I'd like just to have it sit on the shop.
So I need a motion to approve $120,000 CPA to the New City Parks, um, account for the rehabilitation of existing Parsons Street playground, et cetera.
Second.
The motion to approve the $120,000 CPA appropriation. That designated to appropriate from two different accounts to the New City Parks. Anybody have any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up, Burns, why don't you move forward?
Thank you.
Burns Maxi is here. She's the president of CitySpace. We also have Mike Taznik, who's the treasurer. Um, CPA was approached by CitySpace primarily because, first of all, just to review, Phase 1 project, which was completed, which did a lot of infrastructure improvement, new heating, electrical, et cetera, for the, for the building. They've decided to split the second phase into two phases. The second phase will now be the construction of an elevator, et cetera. Um, city council approved, uh, the second phase funds originally. But to make a long story short, construction costs have skyrocketed and CitySpace has come back to ask for additional funding to get Phase 2 done. The CPA Committee debated this over two meetings and voted eight to zero to unanimously support funding the rest of the Phase 2 project. There is a match. This document, which I gave you, councilors, shows there. Just wanted to, shows that they are requesting, and we rounded it up to 878. Um, remaining 584,805 has to be raised. So there is a match by CitySpace. Um, the second part of the discussion at, at the CPA was how to fund it. If you look at this document, I'll read that. CPA looked at this, I presented this to the CPA. We were looking at, remember, we funded $2 million. We reapproved bonding for the project of $2 million. With the caveat that if we were able to use cash, it would reduce that bonding necessity. So in order to fund this, there's $250,000 in the account already from the budget retained, city match. There's historical preservation funding. Um, and in our undesignated fund, if we wanted to use cash, there's $826,000. If we decided to use cash instead of bonding, we would get 507 from the undesignated fund. You can see here, bonding was discussed and thank God for, remember Greg Roland, who's a quite familiar with bonding. It is a very bad time to bond. And I think our treasurer would agree. Uh, we decided not to do that because of the costs. A 10-year note would cost $144,000 and it's just too much. So originally, the project was approved by city council. $1,500,000 in direct funding and $2 million in bond authorization. All right? So if there's $2 million in bond authorization and we start using cash, that bonding, I'll say, capability is reduced. So we used 250, uh, retained city match originally, which reduced the bonding availability to $1,750, because we're not going to go over $3,500,000, because that's what the city council previously approved. So if, after the $878,000 of current requesting bonding authority would be only 872. In other words, if we approve this, there's only 872,000 left in bonding availability. Now, yes, there's $2 million in bonding authorization, but CitySpace would have to come back to the city council to go beyond this 878, because that would bring it beyond the $3,500,000. Is that clear to everybody? Did I explain that right? Balances in the CPA account, if funded without the bond, would be 319,000 undesignated and almost 800,000 affordable housing. So left after we approve this is still $1,110,000. And the CPA Committee was fairly sure that the majority of things coming our way would be affordable housing for the next six months. So they felt comfortable doing this by cash. Two things that I stated, one is if this is not funded, I think the project will die. Because if we don't build Phase 2, and CitySpace has a great deal of work to do to make the match, but if we don't build it, um, now the costs will just skyrocket as time goes on. Secondly, if we build it, grants and state funding might be more readily available because they see the project process. That's just my take on it. So now I'm going to turn it over to Burns Maxi to, um, expand on my remarks.
Thank you, councillor. It is true, just to expand upon what you just said in regards to state funding. For example, for this portion of the project, we received $200,000 grant this year. That has to be extended before we can apply for additional funds from the Massachusetts Cultural Council Cultural Facilities Fund, which is the only state funding we've received for this project so far, $100,000. Um, overall, the project has been supported by the city of East Hampton, CPA, and, um, individual business and foundation donors towards the project. So we're really looking towards additional state funding to help us with the remainder of the project um, in addition to this funding from the CPA, as well as individual donors and foundations and businesses as well. Um, so this was a unfortunate, um, challenge that we ran into with going out for bid. The lowest bidder was Kiter Corporation at $2.7 million. And seeing the additional increases, we went to Prudential Architects and said, we had a cost estimate. Their cost estimates have been just wonderful. You know, they really come in right where we were expecting to see them. And they hadn't seen anything like this themselves. So they went back to Kider. They said, what, what happened here? They looked at all the costs and essentially, um, you know, there was a number of costs that were left out of the cost estimate um, in between the designing of the final architectural plans and putting it out to bid, as well as just inflation costs. Um, we also have a significant amount of sub-bidders that bid on the project, but not all of those sub-bidders for the, sorry, subcontractors for the, um, for the project actually bid on those individual, uh, focuses of the, the project, such as, Mike, can you help me out here?
Sure. There are 11 subcontractors that were involved in that. And, uh, five subcontractors were no-bid. So we didn't get five trades to bid. That, that went, goes into general contract. The general bid, which drove the general's price up.
Right, so they had to incur those costs as part of their, um, bid itself. So, um, that's why we're looking at those increased costs. When this did happen, we said, what can we do? We went back to, um, our state representatives and senator and said, what can we do? Can we, we have a, um, a bond bill that is ready to be signed over. And, um, they, they said, okay, we're going to work on this. And if you remember correctly, this past summer, the farm flooding happened. And that was really the primary focus of this, as a whole. So this is where we are now. Um, we're looking forward to getting this next portion of the project done. We have had individual donors come to us and say, I have more funding to give you. Here's 10 grand. I've never given to this project before, but I want to give more. But I want to see this portion happen. I want to see the elevator and entryway happen. Um, this portion is necessary to make the second floor performing arts space come to life. We can't have that accessibility, um, within, we can't have anybody go up to the second floor um, for a performing arts event without that elevator and the entryway.
I just want to, you just reminded me about accessibility. Uh, we had comments made that the current accessibility to the building, the sec, the first floor, is difficult. And this elevator doesn't just provide accessibility to the second floor for the future performing arts center, but to the whole building. And we just had disability people come to us, councilors, and say, we need to improve accessibility. This is a big improvement for that building. There is a lot of nice things happening in the Blue Room. Um, disabled personnel ought to be able to get to that a little easier than they can now. Am I correct?
That is correct.
And I, that was one of the selling points that gave our committee a reason to do this, accessibility. So I just wanted to bring that up because I had forgotten.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a city-owned building. It's built in 1869. It's an old building. It needs a lot of love and care. And having this piece adding this on not only provides usability today and tomorrow, but it also provides some care to the exterior of the buildings, the masonry, um, along that side tower, um, where the new entryway will be. And so that really helps to preserve the building for long-term use, which is an important few things.
Um, one of the things I wanted to bring up was what this is basically like. This is a department, interdepartment transfer. It'll cause all of the projects in this, uh, in the CPA account like departments. So currently, there is an account called Old Town Hall Second Floor Construction. This transfers funds from the other accounts into that Second Floor Construction account. Now, all those funds sit there. They collect interest. They don't go out until the purchaser and CitySpace have the funds in place for the construction project. So it's not like we're just handing cash out. It doesn't go out until the city's satisfied. Because the city's in control of this whole project with regard to the purchasing and everything. And I'm correct on that. So that's important because we do gain a lot of interest over the millions of dollars that are in our companies. And that's one thing I thought I'd ask Kaito, how much did we get? But she went on vacation. No, we'd have to delve into the numbers, but it is considerable because all of these accounts gain interest and it goes back into the undesignated fund. Anyway, councilors, anybody have any questions of Burns, Tom?
Uh, thanks for all of this. Um, uh, so if I did understand this correctly, so we would be moving 878 to, uh, into that Second Floor Construction Account from CPA. And then there's an additional 585 or so that you're looking to raise out of your private donations of the state and whatnot. Do you have a sense of how long that will take? Because, and the reason I ask is that I feel like, if, in the time that it takes to raise that, are we going to see, are you concerned at all that we're going to end up back here again because the, the price is going to further increase with inflation and labor shortages and whatnot?
So our goal is to have this raised before the spring of next year. Um, so that is our goal. We had, we have more than this to raise at the beginning of last year. So it looks similar to the, the beginning of this year. And we got to that point. We went out to bid. We met our goal. Um, so I believe we can do it. Um, I think that if we don't do it now, then there will be increases in costs. Um, so making that commitment to the project, I think, is important for the city to do now rather than later.
Make a commitment, like everything else, it's a grant that leverages other funding, donations, and everything else.
Yeah, I, I guess what I'm asking is do, do we feel confident that if we appropriate this money, then when the work starts, this is going to be what it ends up costing? Or is there a chance it's going to just further spiral?
I think the longer way to do the project and the way it's going to cost, and that, that we know. So, uh, you know, we are working to raise the, the funds that are needed for the project. If we say that we have a million to raise versus $550,000 to raise, which seems more feasible to you. Um, you know, I think that going out to talk to a donor, we have one, we have one donor who came forward to give $500,000 to the project. I had a, a videographer come in to the Old Town Hall and look around. And I was telling, he was asking, where did you get the funds for this? And so I was telling him, and I said, the state has given $400,000 to the project. He's like, you have one donor. Give more than the state has given.
Yeah.
So we know that the state needs to give more. We also know that there's individual donors out there that do support this project and will support this project if they can get it to the next step. They know.
That's incredible. $500,000. Wow. That's incredible, five hundred thousand, wow. That's encouraging. Anything, Tom?
Yeah, I just, it was really in the in the same vein, like first, just want to acknowledge the amount of work that you all have done, right, in terms of this? And so I think that that's really commendable and your dedication, I think, needs to be acknowledged in that. And and I know that, um, you know, obviously, this uh summer was a big challenge for our agricultural community and our farmers and and I just want to make sure. Sure, and kind of like I said, in the same vein, just the state is, our reps and our center is is making efforts to make sure that we're getting additional state funds for this. And are there, is there a timeline for that? Is, I mean, are there things kind of coming up that they're saying, hey, we'd like to dedicate X, Y, and Z so that we're kind of meeting these deadlines so that it's not furthering down? And then like next summer, they're like, oh, okay, well, maybe in August or maybe in whatever. But are there things coming up that they're?
Sure, that will, in order to qualify for, my understanding is for the um the bond bill that is in place is that we have to be um included in the state infrastructure improvement plan. Um, that would not happen until after the spring. So we're looking for other funds that would come forward through individual donors for this specific portion of the project and continue to get funding from the state for that piece of it after that. There will need to be funds for this project beyond what is just here. Um, as you can see, you know, it is going to be a ten million dollar project in the end. Um, if we, if we're looking at the additional cost pieces. Um, so our hopeful timeline is through to get out to bed in the spring. Um, that is our hopeful timeline.
Mark? I think it's second. Anybody? Anything to add, Mike or anybody? Uh, there's no more questions, I can take a motion. You guys ready?
Sure.
The motion is for eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars to incorporate from the CPA uh historic preservation account, undesigned fund and the second floor construction retained city match uh to be moved to the Old Town Hall Second Floor Construction Project.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Done. Public hearing next Wednesday. You should come to ask questions, answer questions. Okay?
Thank you.
Um, is there any other business? That one's too many. I don't have anything. I wanted to do quarterly fiscal report to find out how we were doing last year, but fortunately, Kato's away, so that's not going to happen. Where is she back, um, you know? The one?
Twenty-seven.
So we have another finance meeting. Um, having no other things to discuss, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
No, second.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.